Ah, look at the full gallery we have today, man. We must be doing something right. Hey, but listen, um, it's a pleasure to be here and have, uh, council briefings. And, uh, first on deck is the real estate, um, assessor's office update. Ron Agnor, please come on up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pleasure to be here today.
Pleasure having you. You, you got that smile of a man that look like he's getting ready to retire. I don't know how accurate that is, but...
You know, my favorite meeting of my entire career is, don't you? The last one.
I heard that smile. I had it two years ago.
Well, I was, yeah, I watched last week's council meeting and, uh, noticed that there was some discussion about my retirement. Patrick reached out to me and, uh, said that y'all would like to have a little briefing on the department. So I prepared a very short, small brief, um, for you to let you know where we're at. I, I want to introduce to you, those that haven't met, um, the Assistant Real Estate Assessor, Sue Cunningham, back here. She'll be doing my clicks for me as I go through the... Assessor's office does a whole lot more than that assessment that we give you, that seven hundred million dollars a year. Whole lot of things, and you don't see a lot of them. They're, they're, they're hidden. They really are. Um, you, you get some of them in our annual report. They're not going to go over all of them because we don't have time for that. But in addition to doing a hundred and sixty thousand parcels every year, starting over every year, doing a hundred and sixty thousand and bringing in almost seven hundred million dollars in revenue. There's four quarters of new construction that these appraisers have to get done. There's six months of appeals that the appraisers have to get done. There's five months of appeals with the Board of Equalization that the assessor has to get done. This is all within a twelve-month period. We do the notice file in-house. We do the land book in-house. Nobody else does that. There's nobody that I know in Virginia that the assessor actually processes the land book. We have the software to do it. Who's better to do it than the person that signs it? I sign the land book, so we do that in-house. Um, we do all the plat re-subdivisions, um, in, in, back and forth with G I S, but it comes to our system. We do all the transfers, all the wills, um, all the title disputes. We, uh, we monitor and report the TIFs, the SSDs to you. We monitor and report and take care of the Virginia Landmark Registry, which is a tax rate change. The historic rehabilitation programs, which are credits, the VIVE, the APZ One Rehab Credits that we've got. The energy efficient properties that we process for credits. The land use program, big program, as you know, the land use program, the rollbacks that go along with that, the A R Ps that go along with that. We do all of the state reporting, all the auditing that the state wants from us, all the state reporting, it has to be filed at certain times of the year. Um, we take care of all exempt and non-exempt properties to change that status one way or the other. Um, and all the prorations that have to do with that. We do the FOA requests, which is a lot for an assessor's office. We get a lot of FOA requests. So, that's not everything. That's what I jotted down right before I came over here. Um, and didn't really go to anything to help me with. I just started jotting. So I thought today I would just, this is not a budget presentation. But we are running, um, this operation in the assessor's office out of three point four billion dollars, as you can see, which is only seventy-eight hundred dollars more than it was the year before. So the, the, the coming year will be seventy-eight hundred dollars more than, than the actual current year we're in right now. So our major challenges, can bring them down to three things. Staffing, technology, and outdated software. Let's start with the staff. Actually, we're in good shape as far as staff. Recruiting has been tough, as everybody knows it's been, in every department, I believe. Recruiting has been tough, um, but I've been there before. I've seen it be tough before. And then all of a sudden, the market changes and all of a sudden you got more licensed appraisers that want to be, come to work for us than I can hire. I mean, so I get it both ways. Sometimes you gotta lower the bar a little bit and say, I'll take them out of college. I'll make you an appraiser. We'll bring you in, we'll train you. And that's what we've been doing just lately. We hired, uh, we got one starting this week, a new appraiser. We've got, uh, another that was hired last week that's coming right in here, uh, with, with finance and business analytics degrees from Old Division. So we, we don't mind doing that. I mean, we can take them and we can make them like we want them to be. We also don't mind bringing licensed appraisers in when we can get them. But what's happened in this office to bring us down to the point that we were and we're not now. I think right now we only have three appraiser openings and two clerks, two transfer clerks. And I'll have those appraisers filled by middle of summer. I mean, I just know, I can tell already, things are changing. Uh, so we'll, we'll be, we don't have any problems retaining staff. They don't go to other cities. They don't want to be in other cities. They want to come to Virginia Beach. They want to work here. They feel like this is the end of the line. We, we get them from the office. We get them from just big top of Tampa. Uh, but this is the end of the line for them. They want to come here. They want to work here. So it's not hard bringing talented people in. It's just been hard the last couple of years, I mean, is, is what it is. So, in looking at, at this chart... Just to take a second. This is what I call our, our leadership. The, the, the purple at above is what I call the, the assessor's management team, basically. I, I put everybody in the same room. Sometimes we go over things. We, we hash them out, talk about them. Of course, at the end of the day, an assessor's got to make the decision, but that's the way we manage. Our upper executive level positions are good. None of them, they're all relatively young to the city. They're going to be here a while. They're all very experienced, very good, so that part of bringing the, the younger people up with the appraisers and transfer clerks will be headed by a, a good, a good, sound executive leadership team. Except for me. But that's a good thing, to have the leader, to have the leadership team to be in place at this point with your assessor leaving. And, and, and down in where the appraisers are, we, we asked for some appraisers this year, didn't get it. We'll ask for it again next year. I ask for them every year. And we'll ask for them again next year, Mr. Manager. Um, and it, it more has to do with what we're not getting done than what we're getting done. We're getting all the things that have to be done. We're getting them done. But, as I said, we'll be full. So somebody said to me, why are you asking for new appraisers? Uh, if in fact you can't fill the positions that you've got already? Well, my answer to that is, six or seven months ago, I didn't need to fill those positions. And six or seven months from now, I won't need to fill those positions. I know from the experience, I, I can, I can be full again. We, we can be, we can get those three appraisers by the middle of summer. So with the market the way it is and the way it's turning, uh, we won't have any problems filling up. So staffing is looking up. I just want to remind you with the next slide, and some of you were here, and you may remember, that in FY eleven, we lost, this is financial crisis time, we lost four appraisers. We got one restored. Um, and actually, there was an audit done before we got those four appraisers by an outside audit firm that said we needed seven. But we got four. Uh, we got five. Four or five, I can't remember actually, but anyway, we'd lost four appraisers in FY eleven. FY twenty, we had one restored. But since then, twenty twenty-one, they've been denied. So currently, there's five vacancies. We're at fourteen percent vacancy is what I call it. Um, and, um, the request for the appraisers, as I said, was denied. But even with those two additional appraisers, I'm not even up to where I was ten years ago in the staff. And we've got more work to do now than we did then. So we'll be, they'll be coming back and, and it doesn't matter who your assessor is. First thing you're going to say is, I need more people. So let's see what the results of not having enough people have been and not being able to take care of some things. Because what I've told you about three years in a row, as soon as I took over, one of the, one of the big problems that the department had was we were not doing, uh, inspections of the city on a regular basis. It had never been done. And it's required by the International Association of Assessing Officers, Methods and Procedures, the Appraisal Institute. And now the state code actually brings those organizations into the code and says, you gotta do it. I mean, you've gotta go out there and you've got to see that, if, Mr. Mayor, you got a deck on your house and Miss England, you're down the road and you got a deck on your house, but we don't have it on our records. Well, that's against any and all of the things that we're required to do to keep our licenses, our designations, uh, and all of that. We've got to treat everybody the same. So the only way you can do that, we got pictometry, yeah, we can come in from the sky. We got all kinds of things, but trust me, I'm old-fashioned. But I still know there's only one way for sure, and that's to get out there on the street and look at it. Because you can find things you'll never find from the sky with that. And we're not out there trying to find revenue. That's not the purpose of why we're doing this. Purpose of we're doing this is to be fair and equitable. Everybody should pay the same tax on the same amenities and houses. And that's why we're trying to do it. It's a hundred and sixty thousand parcels. They're not all improved. But it's a lot to do. So I don't know if the answer is to, to hire, you know, we, we need two appraisers either way. But we can get it, and that's fine. But maybe the answer is that we need to look at maybe training some, some temporary help to do some of this with us. And maybe we could save some money by doing that. We'd have to train them. We have to make sure somebody is watching them because we won't need them all the time. But at the current rate, right now, at the current rate that we're down to, which is fifty-four hundred parcels a year looking at, it'd take thirty years to do it. You're supposed to do this every sixty-eight years, according to, uh, the organizations that I mentioned. So if you look at my chart up here, you can see we got, we got going pretty good. We, we did the first time. And you gotta remember, this, this staff had never done this before. They'd never, they weren't even sure of the policies and procedures that we're in, so we had to take it slow. What they did, twelve thousand the first year, fourteen thousand the second year, that's, with the limited staff still. But you can see, I had to put it on hold this year. I couldn't even let them finish a year doing it. We didn't have enough people to do it. So you can see how it dropped to five thousand four hundred. The other thing that I get out of this chart right here is that if you took that, the total, this is reoccurring revenue. This is not a one-year thing. This is something that we should have already had on our records. Now, we take things off too. When we get out there, we're not just out there looking for money. And if we find something to detach garage and we have it on our records and it's not there, we take it off. So we're just correcting the record. That's all we're doing in the field. We're correcting the record and the data. So there's negatives and positives, um, in these final numbers. But you can see that that one point seven eight eight million dollars, if you just let, had let me do that again, that pays for our budget. That pays for the entire real estate assessor's budget. Right there, three point four million dollars. We can do a lot better than this. We know there's a whole lot more out there yet. We gotta have the people to do it, whether it's part-time, full-time, or whatever. So staffing is an issue, and I hope I explained it because I, I, I get up here and I kinda say it real fast in the past. And I wanted this time to give you something. You can actually see the metrics. You can measure it. And you can see that, uh, it will pay for itself and it's the right thing to do. Major technology. We're getting somewhere here. While the annual inspection project is on hold, we have purchased a, a software called Mobile Assessor. And it's field data collection, which means the appraisers can go out in the field, not only look at the data on the parcels when they're out in the field doing their inspections, uh, or their reassessments, but they can actually change the data from the field. And it comes in automatically to our office. There's some work that we have to do inside here. But Mobile Assessor is going to help us. It's going to help us quite a bit. But like all new things, when you get new software, it'll probably take a couple of years before we'll, we'll know how much it's helped us. Because we haven't even started implementing it yet. We're waiting on I T for some resources. But we do think that'll help us. Uh, and then a big one for me, I, I have to have a map for everything. Anybody in my office knows, if you're going to come to me and talk to me about something, you better have a map. Uh, it's just the way I, it's the way I was raised in this, in this profession. And we have not been able to make decent maps in ten years in my office. I mean, we, we're using plotters that people don't even really use anymore. Everything is digital. Everything's on the screen now. The appraisers couldn't work it if, if, if we had the software for them in the past. They, they didn't have the expertise to do that. Their expertise is in appraising. So now, finally, the products and the software that makes it as easy as anybody, that could log into a computer and email, could put whatever attributes they want on a map for themselves and see it and move forward. Very inexpensive tool. I believe the cost of that tool was, I'm going to say about twenty-six thousand dollars, maybe something like that. Uh, and, and after that, it's like sixteen thousand dollars a year and, and just recurring. And they take care of all the data. It's cloud-based. So, so we've got some funding for that. Again, we're not going to see anything out of it for probably, you know, a couple of years. But those, those two things are going to help us quite a bit. The, the big one, when I talk about technology, is what are we going to do? We need to do some planning about our, our main software. We are the only jurisdiction that I know of in Virginia that is totally integrated from G I S all the way to the, to the treasure and out the door. Collections. We all use the same database. Everything is in one place. I know nobody else uses that. They use interfaces. They send that data out to other places and it's processed by I T. And all, we don't do that. Ours is, you make one change in our system, over the treasurer's office, we're going to see it. We make one change, they're going to see ours. We are integrated. Here's the problem. I came here seventeen years ago. I was basically brought here, put that software, and implemented here because I had to implement it in my previous jurisdiction. It wasn't nowhere near as robust as what we have here in Virginia Beach. It wasn't integrated, but it was the same appraisal software. So, um, I was forty years old when I started using that software. I'm sixty-seven now. It's too old. Will it do what it needs to do? Yes, it will. And it's, it's very, very reliable to do that. I don't feel like that the software's going to break on us right now because it's dependable. The problem is, it's twenty-seven years old. And then the, the tax part of it is seventeen years old. That is, in this day and time and technology, that is ages. And we're on a, what's called a client server, which means the software sits on every computer in my office and everybody else that looks at our data here in the city. It sits on their computer. It's not dot net. It's not server-based. It's not cloud-based. It's the oldest Windows environment you could be in. And it needs to be upgraded, not replaced. It needs to be upgraded. And it's, there is three, three point two five million dollars in C I P already for that. But we have not taken any actions to implement it, sit down with the vendor, uh, and, and do a plan. And we have to do that. So I'm telling, I'm telling this body that that has to be done. Now, we have talked to the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue because we all have a stake in this. We all use this same Almentum, is the name of the software, Almentum Technologies, and we all use it. And, um, we are, we are ready to go ahead and move on with this, but it's going to take some resources from, from I T. But, uh, and, and, and a, three years minimum to bring this up and upgrade. And if we don't, it's not going to be supported at some point in time, or something is going to break. So there's my biggest worry. These other things, ah, we can take care of. Not worried about them. That one right there does keep me up at night sometimes because I, I just don't see us moving forward with this. We keep talking about it. We're not moving forward. So, and I'm just talking about staff and the departments. So, I want to thank you for everything that you have done for me. I want to thank free, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for our department and this city. I, I, it's been an honor and a privilege to be your assessor. Wouldn't want to be anywhere else to go out than right here. So I want to thank you for that, and I'm here to answer any questions that you got.
Any other questions? Ron, let me say this. You know, uh, when you run a, to operate a city as big as Virginia Beach, it takes a lot of moving parts. And moving parts got to move together and work in concert with other departments and people and everything. But basically, it's people that make the city. It, you know, not only working here, but living here and everything. And I think I speak on behalf of council in saying that you are indeed value-added to, you know, make us the city that we are today. And even though, yeah, guys like you don't retire, you just do some other stuff. I have a feeling, uh, you'll, you'll be but a phone call away if I know you.
Right there.
Okay? But, you know, just taking our city to the next generation, you know, it's having folks like you. Heartfelt thanks on behalf of many of us.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our finance director, Letitia Shelton, will give an update on our interim finances.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We are Dyer, City Council. I'm Letitia Shelton, Finance Director, here to present the city's finance, um, report through April thirtieth. Can't see the mouse on the screen?
Technology is a blessing and a curse.
Yes, it is.
So tell us about your new office while we wait. Do you like it?
My new office is great.
Yeah, I saw it. I was up there the other day. It is a nice location. Yeah. It was about a week ago before, everybody was in there full.
Oh, okay.
But I went around the corner there. It was really nice. Yeah.
Patty did a good job.
Yeah, she did a good job. Did a fine job.
Yeah, it's like returning to the catacombs right now. Like, that's our new home. That's the people's, that's the people's homes there. All righty.
Ready?
Only twenty-five a gallon is expensive, isn't it?
Sorry. Okay. Okay. General fund revenues through April are seven hundred, seven hundred sixty-one point five million and are sixty-one point seven percent of the budget and exceeds the prior year by forty-seven point four million or six point six percent. General fund expenditures are one million, one hundred twenty-six point three or eighty point one percent of the F Y twenty-two budget. Year-to-date expenditures exceeds the prior year by eighty-two point four million or seven point nine percent. This chart reflects a two-year average of the general funds' actual revenues and expenditures. As you can see, the actual revenues, the blue line, are six point one, sixty-one point seven percent through April and are tracking three point seven percent higher than the previous two years. Extra expenditures are eighty point one percent. The green line are tracking five point seven percent below the two-year average of eighty-five point eight percent. Real estate tax revenue is three hundred and thirteen million, which is fifty-three percent of the current year's budget and is more than the prior year by one point five million. The first half of the revenue estate levy was due on December fifth. The second half is due June fifth. Personal property tax revenue is thirty-five point one million, which is twenty-nine point five percent of the current year's budget and is over the prior year by nine point four million. Personal property tax main levy for F Y twenty-two is one hundred and eight, eighteen point five million and is due also on June fifth. The general sales tax revenue is sixty-four point seven million, which is eighty-nine percent of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by seven point ten, I'm sorry, by seven point one million or twelve point three percent. The sales tax is on a two-month leg, so collections through April represents June through February sales. Sales tax revenue continues, continues a positive trend for F Y twenty-two throughout the Hampton Roads. The business license revenue, excuse me, business license revenue is an annual tax and was due on March first. Actual, actual revenue is fifty-three point two million and is more than the prior year by one point four million or two point six percent. Restaurant, restaurant meal tax revenue is forty-four point nine million, which is a hundred and thirteen percent of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by twelve point three million. Meal tax is also on a one-month leg. Collections are from April, are June through March. Hotel room tax revenue is eight point seven million, which is a hundred and twenty-one percent of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by two point five million. Hotel tax is on a one-month leg, so collections through April represents June through March. Total personnel cost through April represents twenty-two of twenty-six pay periods. Is three hundred and fifty-three point four million or seventy-eight point five percent of the total budget. Public safety cumul- cumulative personal costs through this time period is a hundred and forty-five million compared to last year at this time, which was a hundred and twenty-four million. That concludes my short, but brief financial presentation.
So thanks, John.
I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to slide four, please? First of all, I want to thank you for your last answer that you made the question about how much of that money was from fines prior year collections. It was like six point one million dollars, if my memory serves me correct. So does that number here reflect that six, that six point one million? Or is that real estate tax rate just for the collection of the year that we build and doesn't include interest and penalty, which we wouldn't have budgeted for, nor collection from prior year? So is that a, is that a truly what we build and to collect for that year or what we have collected for real estate going back, which was that six point one million dollars?
I have to check.
Because that would be good to know because that tells us how much we really collected over what was really owed this year. And if you could go to, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, the Schedule D, I don't know which, was the labor slide that you had?
That was the last slide.
And what I'm trying to understand, make sure I understand, is when you have the, the budget on the far left, that's for the whole year, and this is general government, and then you had a separate block for public safety. So I go across that actual, so, but on this slide, you have the variance and the detail attached to your letter. I don't see the, the variance in here. So what is the projected under execution of the general government payroll relative to what was appropriated?
Okay. You want me to get back to you on that?
I, I would.
Okay.
And since fringe benefits never get paid once the payroll of vacancy, you never pay it. I'd like to make sure we see the fringe benefit. I've noticed here that that is obviously underperforming in a big way because we've had about eight hundred and something vacancies per bi-weekly pay period. But it would be nice to, to know that. And this is a question for Kevin, not for you. But when we get that number, I'd like to know in the current year budget, the one that we're operating in through June thirtieth, how much in the out year, which will be next year's budget, did we program for under executions as pay-go? Versus based upon this, how much is in the budget for pay-go for that same year based on the budget we just adopted for one July? Those are my only questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks a bunch? Okay.
Not a question, but a comment. Uh, I guess this might be the appropriate time to just stop a moment and, uh, pay our respects to Giles Dodd, who passed away. Giles, I think, set the standard for us, uh, not only with our financing and budgeting, but simply in the way we treat each other. And he was always known as Gentleman Giles. And he was certainly one of the, the finest people that I ever had the opportunity to work with. And I think anybody who was here at that time would have him included on their list, and we would certainly, uh, remember him. I, I think we've heard two very important presentations about the financing of our city. We certainly have to make sure we're right in what we are, uh, have on people's real estate taxes. And I, I think what we've heard today, we, we really need to, uh, examine.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Very well stated. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're on to, uh, council discussion and initiatives and comments. Um, now, once again, you know, I think that, Mr. Dehaney, would it be appropriate to, to discuss the, uh, secession for Mr. Agnor at this point? Or do we have any direction for?
Mr. Mayor, um, last time we talked, you mentioned you wanted to talk about that in the club. Mr. Mayor, last time we talked, you mentioned you wanted to talk about that in the closed session, Mayor.
Okay, you know, just double checking.
Yeah, so Mr. Agner.
Some stuff we have to talk in open, some stuff we have to talk.
Yeah, Mr. Agner is here to go in closed session. We were the first item, it'll be one of the first items you discussed in closed session today.
Thank you very much. Just a point of clarification. Okay, anybody else? John and then.
All you have to miss, Miss Wooton.
Thank you. I, I actually want to certainly offer my thoughts and prayers specifically for Buffalo, New York and the victims, the ten victims or the ten dead victims and the ten, or excuse me, three surviving victims. And just really such a heinous crime, just a very heinous hateful crime targeted at individuals because of the color of their skin. And so it was difficult to watch that over the weekend and certainly like to express my sincere condolences to everyone, the families, everyone involved, the leadership there. And also there was a mass shooting as well in California and there were four victims there and that was in a church. And so those are a couple of things that caught my attention this weekend. Just really, as we look across this country and our region, we just see so many things that are going on. But just really wanted to bring attention to those heinous acts, but also really offer thoughts and prayers for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, before John, you know, along the line, what Ms. Wooton said, I did convey to the city of Buffalo, you know, I made a call to Mayor Byron Brown. And, you know, certainly he is, you know, going through a tough time, but I did convey to his staff the thoughts and prayers of the council and the people of Virginia Beach and offered him, you know, that we would be a resource to him if we ever thought that he would need us. Okay, John?
I think all my colleagues would ditto your remarks, knows it, Ms. Wooton's. But I would like to turn now, I know one budget's behind us, that's a sunk cost, but I want to reiterate, we need to adopt a timeline on ourselves where we really do provide by a resolution upfront fiscal guidance. The manager asked for it. We never provided it. We never had the discussion on programmatic issues and what our priorities were and we never adopted them as a body. I think that that is not serving the public well. I don't think it serves the public well when we get the reconciliation budget on the day of the meeting. I don't think anyone was happy with that. I don't think, none. I understand circumstances, but we need to learn a lesson from that. We don't have to like the outcome of the process, but we need to have a better process where we provide that articulated guidance upfront. So there can be a robust debate of that and that the manager, we may at the end, when he gives us a recommendation, change our mind based on the course of events. But we really owe it to ourselves and to the public and to the manager to let them know. And that gets back to some of the things that Ms. Henley talked about. Are, are we really going to say these are the only paths that you're going to be able to get your money through or these are the people, the things that don't? So that there's clarity and that we know how we're operating and what people have to do. And then stick with the process that we had. We had a process to consider talking about all of the money that we carried over from last year during the budget process. But come February 1st, we overwrote a decision we made on January 18th. We have got to do a better job ourselves to communicate to the manager and to the larger public what our budget guidance is. Governor gives budget guidance. The appropriations committees give budget guidance to the general assembly. It's not the, but they do give broad overall guidance that people can plan by. And that's, I don't know when our next retreat is, probably shouldn't happen until after the election to make it productive. But we do need to make sure that fiscal guidance is on the top of our list by a resolution and not by eleven individual phone calls and the manager's trying to use his Ouija board to figure out what we want. That's got to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Aaron.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As a suggestion for formal session, can we have a moment of silence to recognize the victims of the Buffalo mass shooting?
Yeah, during the formal session, we will do that upfront, you know, right after the invocation.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussions at this point? Ms. Wilson, well, Ms. Wilson is away, Vice Mayor. And so Mr. Jones, could you kindly step in and go through the consent agenda?
All right. Under ordinances and resolutions, first one's the ordinance to modify the boundary of herd code, neighborhood dredging, special service district, remove seven properties and authorize a refund of SSD levies. Anybody have any objection to that? Okay. Two, A, six dash thirty, raid fishing on the northern section of the beach during resort season at Little Island Park deferred from April 19th, 2022. Ms. Henley?
Yes, I did ask to have this deferred so we could get more feedback from the anglers and I think we have touched base with them. But I did have one question. I noticed the, the change that's on our agenda strikes the last four words during the resort season. So is this to mean that these restrictions will apply throughout the year, both at the Forty-Second Street to Rudy Inlet area and also Little Island?
That wasn't what we discussed.
I don't, I'm not, I don't recall that change, but I don't think we're changing that. I think it's only for the resort season, but we'll get some clarity on it too.
Well, if you could look at this, the effect of striking those last four words of during the resort season, it, it seems like while that was there, it meant that these time restrictions were only in effect on weekends and holidays during the resort season. But if we strike those words, it means they're in the effect for weekends and holidays at all times. And I'm not sure that's what we want, but I just think we need to be clear.
I will look into it. I also am not aware of any intent to, to change that principle, so.
Maybe we need to not strike it at this time and consider it later if.
We'll find out, but I don't think the intent is to strike it. We'll verify, but.
All right, thank you.
So do we?
It, it can be on consent agenda if we're clear on that point and I don't think, I mean, I certainly don't want to have it only, I mean, I, I think it should be.
Yep.
Resort season only.
So if that's true, when Mr. Jones reads the agenda, he'll say to unstrike the last part.
Right.
Okay.
We, we already have two speakers signed up on that one.
We do?
Yeah, so it'd be pulled from consent agenda.
So it'll be pulled anyway.
I think the reason that it's, if you look at the text on line nineteen, it already said during the resort season. So I think it was probably viewed as being redundant and deleted for that reason. I don't think it changes the intent. I think it embodies the intent in a less wordy and potentially less confusing way.
I had noted that, but I just wanted to be sure. So just, just so we're sure what we're doing. Okay.
But redundancy is not bad.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I mean, if, if, if it's council's desire that we put those four words back in and have them in there twice, we certainly, we certainly can do that. Just, just tell us what you'd like.
It's better to be safe than sorry. Okay.
So are we going to leave the words there?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we'll see, since it's pulled anyway, it won't be on the agenda, consent agenda, we can.
Any changes made when the motions being made?
Item two B, ten dash, well, ten dash one, Ray, change polling locations from June twenty twenty-two primary election. Buckner Precinct to Rosemont Elementary School and Trantwood Precinct to Trantwood Elementary School. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that. My only concern is how effectively we can devote a registrar to keep, that's twenty-one days is when the primary is. Making sure they can get all the mailing notifications out to people before then. That's a, we'll, we'll get some feedback on that. But I, I know they make the change.
Ordinance, item three, ordinance to authorize acquisition of property and fee simple and acquisition of temporary permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation. Ray, Elbow Road Extended Phase Two C Project, CIP, number one oh oh one five nine, formerly CIP two dash one twenty-four. Everybody okay? Four, ordinance to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a deed of release and exchange, Ray, an agricultural reserve program, land preservation easement located on the land of Vanguard Landing, Inc. Everybody okay?
Yeah, my only question is, does the VBDA have any role in this since they're the ones that we gave the property to? I thought they entered into the agreement, so are they a party to any of this?
I don't think they're a party to this action, no.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Alex, is that accurate?
Okay, just wanted to confirm.
After the vote, I would like to make some comments about the issue.
Not, not a problem at all.
But it's okay to be on the consent agenda because it's routine.
Item five, resolution to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement to establish and maintain the Virginia Beach Conservation Assistance Program between the city and Virginia Dare Soil and Water Conservation District. Okay?
This is a very good thing. We actually had it in our budget last year to establish this program in conjunction with the Virginia Dare. It's pretty exciting because it allows individuals on their own property to do things to control stormwater. And I, I'm glad to see this come through so early in this process and I hope we can all help make the word known that this property, this program is even more available than it was. It's been very popular and now I think with our participation, it can be more so. Thank you very much.
Item six, ordinance to approve the sale of a portion of school board property for the city's Westneck Road Phase Four project and allow the school board to retain the sale proceeds. Everybody okay?
I'll be abstaining and I have a statement to make at the end of the consent agenda on this and another item.
I would just say it's so good to see those orange cones out there in this project finally moving.
All right, item seven, resolution to approve the issuance of residential care facility revenue bonds up to a hundred and sixty-four million, Ray, Westminster Canterbury on Chesapeake Bay.
Any speakers on that?
Yes, sir. Just one. Signed up on everything.
Any speaker?
Just one. We have one speaker who signed up on every item.
Oh, okay. All right, I will be abstaining on that. I abstained on the original rezoning and so I'm going to abstain on that too. I'll give the clerk my letter on that. Item eight, ordinances to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of the city owned a right-of-way known as Sandfeller Road adjacent to two four four five. Sandfeller, Sandfeller Fiddler Road, Ray, retain twelve four-inch wood pile, posting, posts deferred indefinitely from December 7th, 2021, District Two, formerly Princess Anne.
We have speakers. We have two speakers on that.
We do have to pull this.
And one of them is the applicant, so yes, I think so.
As I understand it, the staff is recommending approval as we did before, but with the insurance being required.
Yes, ma'am.
And the applicant does not want to do that, is that correct?
The applicant does not, has currently articulated that he is not amenable to the insurance terms.
But as this ordinance is written, we keep the proposal but require the, the insurance.
The, the, the encroachment would require the typical insurance.
The liability.
Liability insurance be provided, yes.
But the applicant is, is going to speak?
The applicant has, has signed up to speak and then one additional person, so I think you can just pull that and hear it.
So we pull it.
We'll pull it. All right, item B, property known as twenty-nine seventy-three Heron Ridge Drive and city maintenance easement located at the rear of twenty-nine thirty-seven Couples Court. Ray, two bulkheads and a deck, District Two, formerly District Seven, Princess Anne.
I've heard no comments, so that should be okay.
Should be okay. Property known as Treasure Canal located at the rear of twenty-two thirty-two Windward Shore Drive. Ray, construct and maintain a boat lift, wood dock, wood pier, six wood piles, District Eight, formerly Lynn Haven. Okay? Item nine, ordinance to donate forty ballistic vests to the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police and Foundation. Item ten, ordinance to increase appropriations by one point three five million to the Fuels Inner Internal Service Fund and authorize city manager to transfer funds from the city manager's pandemic reserve for fuel costs to various departments. Everybody okay?
I'm voting no and I'll explain my reasoning and I explain my extensions.
Okay. Thank you, John.
All right. You're voting no, you think?
Correct.
Okay. Item eleven, ordinance to appropriate a twenty thousand, twenty million, nine hundred and seven thousand, six seventeen from federal and state funding to fiscal year two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two. Schools category grant funds. Everybody okay?
This is my second extension and I have a letter on file and I'll explain that.
You're abstaining on that?
Correct. I have to.
Item B, four hundred and fifty, to appropriate four hundred and fifty thousand in revenue to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Department of the Virginia Aquarium Operating Budget. Ray, additional expenditures related to Virginia Aquarium Gift Shop. Everybody okay?
Can you open a public hearing on planning?
All right, under planning, item one, the Atlantic Development Associates LLC and WPL Ventures LLC for variance to Section four point four B of the subdivision regulations, Ray, subdivide two lots at one eleven seventy-third street, District Six, formerly District Five, Lynn Haven. Do we have any speakers on that?
Just one speaker so far.
The applicant has requested, has agreed to a deferral to the first meeting in August on this.
Defer.
Is it indefinite, so first meeting in August?
First meeting in August.
Meeting.
I believe that's August the eighth. Let me just confirm that.
That, that, that shouldn't work out.
Doesn't sound right.
Sorry?
Is, is there a Tuesday meeting before?
The eighth can't be the first Tuesday.
The second is, yeah, so the second is National Night Out. So you all have, you all are not having a formal meeting that night.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good point of clarification.
You should never question the clerk.
That's correct.
My, my formal and public apologies.
I hope that's been recorded. Whatever that is.
This is not the first time we've been put in our place by the clerk, Mr. Stone.
Item two, Sacred Daggers LLC, Percy Lee Jones, Jr., Family Trust, for a special exception for alternative compliance, Ray, Tattoo Parlour at seventeen oh five Mediterranean Avenue, District Six, formerly District Beach District. Anybody have any comments or?
You okay with that?
Everybody okay? Item three, RVB three LLC for a modification of profits to a conditional change of zoning for a drive-through only restaurant at fifty-four fifty-three Wesleyan Drive, District Four, formerly District Two, Kempsville.
No, no objection.
Item four, baking it, caking it LLC, Brianna Small for a conditional use permit, Ray, home occupation, commercial kitchen bakery and forty-five hundred Hollings. Ray home occupation, commercial kitchen bakery, and forty-five hundred Hollingsworth Lane, District Two, formerly District One, Centerville. Everybody okay?
Yeah, that's fine for consent.
Item five, Enterprise Leasing Company of Norfolk, Richmond LLC, E T Enterprises LLC, for a conditional use permit, Ray motor vehicle rentals, one 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 two Lynn Haven Parkway, District Formerly District Three, Rose Hall. Mr. Balucci?
I have no opposition, so.
I'm assuming that all these were okay, and there's no speaker.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Item six, Car Spa, Inc., General Booth Venture Group LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray car wash facility at the northeast corner of General Booth Boulevard and Prosperity Road, District Five, formerly Beach District. Anybody got any comments? Everybody okay? Item seven, Nora Nemley for a conditional use permit, Ray Family Daycare at seventeen twelve Moon Valley Drive, District Five, formerly District Three, Rose Hall, Mr. Balucci?
It's good.
Okay?
Yes.
Item eight, Waterman Spirits LLC, Festival LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray Craft to Sterling at seven twelve Atlantic Avenue, District Five, formerly Beach District. Everybody okay? Item nine, Christopher and Kathleen Sprower for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at twenty-two hundred and twenty-two oh two, Mediterranean Avenue, District Six, formerly District Six Beach. Everybody okay? Item ten, Coastal Accommodations LLC, twenty-two East Neptune LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental, four-ten Twenty Second Street, Unit B, District Six, formerly District Six Beach. Okay? Item eleven, George Stoyanoff for a conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at four oh oh five Atlantic Avenue, Unit one fifteen, District Six, formerly District Six Beach. All right. And item twelve, ordinance to amend section one eleven of the CZO to add terms related to energy storage facilities, ordinance to add section two-two five point oh two to the CZO and add requirements to energy storage facilities, ordinance to amend sections one oh oh one of the CZO to include energy storage facility as a use permitted with a conditional use permit in the one dash one and one dash two districts, I one and I two districts sponsored by Vice Mayor Wilson deferred from April the fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
I had requested that the deferral from April occur, and I appreciate that. And during this time, Don Horsley of the Planning Commission and I had an extremely informative meeting with some folks from Dominion Energy. I have a very good PowerPoint that I'd be happy to copy and distribute to anybody. This is an extremely interesting concept of the battery storage projects and so forth, but it's not something that we are eminently going to be involved with. It's going to be a ways away. And so I would ask that we defer it indefinitely for two primary reasons. They are only just now beginning getting ready to open their first of these facilities, which is in northern Virginia, and they offered to allow some of us to go there and look at their facility. And I think it's complicated enough that that would be a good thing before we establish our ordinances. And secondly, these storage facilities need to be located near the substation sites, and they are going to be giving us a list of the substation sites where these are going to be generally needed. And I think that information, too, would be very helpful with this. So while we, until we proceed with this, I think it would be to our advantage to defer it and make sure we're thinking about all the right things. And anyone who's interested, this is very complicated, I've written it all over it, but I'll be glad to make copies of it and give it to anybody.
I think we all got a copy of it.
Oh, you did? Good.
John?
I don't want to compliment Dominion Energy point. I didn't know whether or not any of our data centers, sometimes they have their own backup big battery installations that have nothing to do with putting power on the grid, but providing, so I would like to just make sure that there isn't something in the queue that relies upon that battery storage facility separate from supplementing the power grid.
So thank you for the question, and certainly we have some time here, but it is important to note, we're holding, and I don't have the exact number with me here, at one time it was six letters of intent that are impacted by this decision. I think it's four currently. Ms. Henley's absolutely right, the sites that are needed here are in proximity to existing Dominion substations. The, they, I would tell you, without violating various non-disclosure agreements that we have signed regarding projects we are chasing, if we could get thirty, even sixty days as opposed to indefinite, it would help me tremendously because we do have, we do have letters of intent not specific to Dominion that are waiting on this. And it's important to note, Dominion has RFPs on the street now for contracted construction of this, where we understand that it's their plan to own approximately sixty percent of this, of this storage capacity. There will be a private sector component. The private sector entities that hope to respond to that have to control real estate to be able to respond. And so there is some nuance to this conversation with us, but certainly, if there, if council needs more time, we, certainly, we're happy to work with that. It would help me, though, to be able to give our industrial partners that are waiting on this decision some guidance on time.
Well, I would like to have some guidance about what they are requesting, because of course, there are safety issues that are very much involved in the way these are constructed, and whether we are, is this lithium ion energy storage safety and the mitigation strategies and just what we're requiring, I'm not sure we're all up to, I'm not up to speed on these kinds of things. But I think if we have these concerns, we need to know exactly what we're doing, because I think the, in hearing all of the things that are necessary to make sure that we are permitting these and locating them and building them in a fashion that is safe, and we are, I think, if they are providing training to the fire department and so forth and dealing with these things, there's a lot involved here. And I don't remember getting any kind of briefing on it.
Not on these projects specifically, because today, with these, these conversations have existed within the Development Authority, admittedly, and within industrial property that you have conveyed to them. And so certainly, if there's a need to get more information to this body, we're happy to do it. We are confident that the players that are involved in this conversation do offer all of the safety and security the community needs, because this is what they do for a living, they do this, they do this throughout the grid. That said, certainly, we're not trying to push the body to make a decision today, it's not ready to make, but it just helps me to be able to give those that are waiting on this decision some, some understanding of when it might be before the body. And so if it's thirty or sixty days, that's helpful, it's just indefinite creates a problem for me, and you would likely lose some, if not all, of these proposals. They would simply move on to just be.
Sixty days, yes, and I would really like, you know, we're kind of finding ourselves in conflict with neighborhoods on a lot of these projects. And I think if we're doing anything that's going to be an impact on a neighborhood, we kind of need to know. And so we need, I would like to know where these generally are to be situated, and if they're to be near substations, if that's not an issue with anybody except Dominion Energy, we need to know that, too.
Yes, ma'am, and this is, and certainly, we'll get you more information on this. This is, certainly, the requirement to put these in industrialized real estate was an attempt, was an attempt on our part to insulate neighborhoods, but it's clear I owe you some more information on this, we'll pull it together and come back to you.
We need to know before we go rezoning something industrial, that that's what's going to happen here. And just because we're zoning something industrial, you know, it might be very close to a residential neighborhood, we've got a habit of doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
And our neighborhoods are getting pretty anxious.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, John?
I first raised this issue when this first came up, about the regulations about safety issues of lithium, just because I have some experience in that area. But I think it would be helpful at the same time, because there are a number of places out there with huge battery power pack installations across the country, some like terawatts of power in some of those backup places. I think it would be good to share with us.
Yes, sir.
Just what those fire suppression standards are, which is usually just burying it in water, if that is the best solution for that. But it takes lots of it.
That's right, and there's a new, and it's interesting, they basically created an airtight chamber by just locking it down with foam. It's an interesting thing, we can get you all that.
I think that would be helpful to know what is in place, what is the state of practice. Always people like to be able to see where has it been done, pictures are a thousand words.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we'll get all that to you.
Thank you very much.
So we're going to defer for sixty days.
Defer for sixty.
It puts you right at July twelfth, the last meeting before you go on break. Is that good?
Beg pardon?
Sorry, that would put you right around July twelfth, that's the last meeting before you go on summer break.
July twelfth.
Yes, sir. It's not quite sixty, but right at it.
Okay, great job, thank you, Mr. Jones, okay? All right, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion of recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by section two point two thirty-seven eleven A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: public contract, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds, and discussions of the terms or the scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position of negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine Atlantic Park. Perspective business or industry, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating and expanding facilities in the community, that's Beach District, and proprietary information related to economic development, discussion or consideration information subject to the exclusions in subdivision three of item two point two thirty-seven oh five point six, related to economic development, Atlantic Park. And then we have personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining or resignation of the specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one. And there is also council appointments, boards, commissions. Okay, I'll just read this anyway, because it's here. Council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Motion?
So vote.
Second? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I just need a minute of disclosure. Thank you. I will not be participating in the council executive session with regards to the presentation by the Atlantic Park principals, because that puts me in a gray area of potential conflict of interest because of Dominion Energy, so I'm staying out of the gray space. I was able to legally meet under the state conference, for instance, all with the Atlantic Park principals, which I did for about two hours on Monday, so I've had a chance to see the presentation and ask my questions, but I will not be participating during their presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, we are recessed into a second.
I'm sorry, no, we need to vote, please.
Oh, did we?
We've not voted.
But the lights were on.
Well, no, I need, Ms. Ralph, you.
I think we have a baptism going on.
Look at close, a vote of nine to zero. A vote of nine to zero, you recess into closed session.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I apologize.
You're good now.
All righty.